All right, I'd like to call an order, Town Council Regularly Meeting, August 17th, 2023, Cape Charles, Sip Center. Roll call.
Buckholz is present.
Loafer is present.
Bennett is present.
Beuta is present.
Grossman is present.
Fulmer is present.
Let it be known, we've established a quorum. If we could please rise at a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have recognition of some visitors this evening. Cape Charles Main Street, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. I don't know if you've had a chance to look over the report that I sent, but it is an update of the one we did in January for the following six months. So I'm just going to hit highlights here because I know that you've seen this similar one before, but I want to update just some -- all the stuff that is new. We have a new person joining our staff. Her name is Emily Martinez. She is getting ready to move here. She met her fiance, who was a local at Redford University, and she'll be joining us the first week of September. I'm looking forward to getting Emily on board. Whoops. We have -- here's our Board of Directors. Sadly, we've lost Tammy this year, but you only have to be gone a year, girl. You can always come back.[133.47][133.47](Laughter) But we do have two positions open right now. We need a co-chair for design, and we also need a business liaison, and I'm actively looking for those right now. We talked about the DHD support, which is so important to Cape Charles Main Street. We talked about this in January. However, I don't know that we talked about how much we actually use them, and it'll become more evident as I get to where we start listing grants. But we have used Frazier and Associates multiple times. We've used them for the train, Strawberry Street, for the old Meatland project, and they've always come through with flying colors. And we've also had opportunity to take advantage of a lot of the training they have, which is free to us. We do it monthly as well as, of course, our Revital as Leasing Specialists. It helps us look for the right grants. So what everybody wants to know is, where does the money go? So we went over this in January, but it's now updated with new numbers, so I just wanted to hit a couple of the highlights here. This year, we had to redo our map project, which is quite expensive, and I think everybody has seen the map. So I have brought extra copies if anybody here has not. But that is a big project that requires a good chunk of money. We went through $32,001 in one year last time. I did 62,000 copies this year, and we have already gone through, I think, 4,000 of them. So right off the bat in the first two months, that's how many we've gone through. We've spent a bit on our marketing, of course, and I've got some samples of that. We have changed up how we're doing our advertising, because I don't believe in just a straight ad. We've turned all of our ads, as we have in the best of, to more advertorials that are more of like a story. So I think they are a lot more impactful than a simple ad. So I do have extra copies of this. This was the best of issue, which Cape Charles always does very well in, and I brought extra copies. If you don't have one or haven't seen it, I have them here if you'd like one. The train car. The train car is definitely one of our big projects, along with the Bathroom Visitor Center, and we're going to talk more about that later, as well as all of our events. And over $84,000, almost $85,000 of our dollars go into the putting on these events. Let's talk about the grants. We carried over from last year a little over $92,000, almost $90,000, $91,000 from grants we had for the train. For obvious reasons, there's been a few delays, but we are targeting opening before season next year. So those grants I just carried over, but we've also taken in 178,688 new grants for fiscal year '24. And I've got them all laid out here as which projects those go against. There's several for obviously map, walking tour, Love Run, Love Fest in those, but also several infrastructure grants that, again, will go for the train, like storyboards for around it, and some of our events, et cetera.
Would you say most of these come from DHCD and county tourism?
Most of -- they're either DHCD, a lot from Northampton County, as you can see, but also VTC, Virginia Tourism.
Okay.
What you're seeing, though, right now, before I move on, is a lot of the funding that we're still able to get has been ARPA funding, that's been leftover dollars. So I don't expect every year to be like the one we've had the last two years in the number of grants we've had. So I just wanted to be aware that we're doing extremely well, and I've been very fortunate with the grants we've gotten. But I do expect at some point here, probably next fiscal year, they're going to start lowering the amounts. VTC has already started with being -- going back to matching grants, where before we had no match, it was flat-out money. Now we're matching again. So, all right, we've completed all the events fiscal year '23 that we always do. Love Run, Love the Locals, Easter Bunny, Fest of Virginia, Fest of Fridays, and we're getting ready to do Love Fest. I think, as everybody is aware, that's coming up in two weeks from Saturday, so everybody get your hippie garb out and get ready. But again, none of this happens without our volunteers. At the end of fiscal year '23, everybody had stepped up this past year and put in 4,266 hours. And it's not just board, that's residents that come on board for every event and help us out. That equates to almost $121,000 in value that we get from our support for CCMS, through our residents. So what I want to do is talk a little bit about what's new. We all know what we do for marketing as far as print, advertising, et cetera. I wanted to talk about something that's new for just a minute, and that's the Cape Charles gift card. If you haven't seen it, we -- they're gift cards you can get either in hard copy, like you do a regular credit card, or you can order online from this Cape Charles, Virginia's Cape website. And the reason we did that is because when you look at somebody getting a gift card, a regular Visa or MasterCard, they can go spend that anywhere. They can spend it here, they can spend it in Virginia Beach, it doesn't matter where they are. The research tells us that they spend more on a local gift card, and you keep more of those dollars in your locality. Even if you buy a gift card locally, one of the big box stores, you will get $43 to $68 of that. The rest is going to go somewhere else. This card, you keep 100% of it in town. That's what's so special about it. So we just started it in June, and what we have gotten so far is we've loaded, let's see, I can hardly read this, 40 -- over $4,200 onto these gift cards. I can tell exactly where these get spent, which is great. So I know I have 27 stores in town on it right now, and I'm going to start visiting before the fall gets here to make sure that we get others on, because we are going to start really marketing the card before the holidays, so people understand they want to get those cards and give them out as gifts, and they'll make great gifts. So we want to make sure we're keeping everything here in Cape Charles. The tot and meals tax, these you already know. My numbers might look a little bit different than what you see, because Deb has told me that the numbers that I originally get are not adjusted numbers after, you know, their adjustments take place. So mine are a little -- maybe a little bit different than what you see, but I think the story's the same regardless. They're going up significantly. So CCMS will continue to push our marketing efforts to the shoulder season. We will not take out ads usually in the summer. We put them all towards events, which are all in the off-season, shoulder season. They start in September and they end in April. So we will continue those efforts as well. Our social media, on the websites, Facebook and Instagram are all doing well. The website's been up just two years now, and though the numbers are growing up, the users and views, what's really important in this number is how much that the engagement rate is going up. What that means is that the higher the engagement rate, which averages more like in the 45%, when you're doing well, 45 to 48, you're doing really well. Ours is at 63, which means that people that go on that website are spending more time on that site. They're hitting numerous pages, not just one and done. So they're actually spending a lot more time on that site than somebody that goes there just to look up one thing. So that's the good news. So I'd like to turn this over to Bill Stram, CCMS President, and he's going to go through the year-end financials.
Thank you, Karen. So in January, I briefed you, that's the slide right there, that's what I presented. I just want to point out the numbers for income, $192,000, $192,000, and the expenses of $155,000. So at the end of the year, almost doubled. In some cases, it did double. We're very thankful to the town for the $90,000 that we got, but the grants, these numbers differ a little bit, but this is actually monies that are on the books that we have to -- we put for tax purposes. A lot of our grants, you -- she didn't tell you, Karen didn't say this, but our grants, we don't get the money until we complete the grant and give receipts. So a lot of our grants, we didn't finish up until -- you know, we didn't get the money back until July. So $92,200 from grants that we did receive last year. The events and projects were really great, $102,000 in events and projects that we ran last year. Of course, on the opposite side, we also spent quite a bit over there, too, $114,000. So we're financially secure, and again, I thank you.
Okay. So what's coming up next? Main Street has looked at this, and we're going to try to concentrate our efforts on four key projects. The first being the Visitor Center and Bathrooms, because it's so important to our business community that we get those open before the season starts. So that is the number-one priority. Many of our grants that we have coming in this year are going towards that project, so we're going to push hard to try to do what we have to do to help make that happen. So that's number one. The three other projects, we looked at, even though Main Street's designated the area only goes to the town line, we feel that when you're talking about beautification and how Cape Charles looks and feels, needs to -- feels carries out all the way to Route 13. When you're coming down Route 13, there isn't much that makes you want to turn and come down Stone Road to Cape Charles. People don't even know what's there, because it doesn't look like a whole lot. And even when you make that turn, you've got two miles of some pretty trees, but unmoed grass, things that don't look so good. And even though we are responsible from the town inn for our projects, we would like to take the lead on pulling together everybody that's involved in beautification from 13 out, which means Canone homeowners and property owners on the north side, VDOT, and the county. So we're going to take the lead and try to pull together those groups, as well as other stakeholders, and start the talks on what should or could the entrance to Cape Charles look like, all the way from 13 down. This will be a multi-phase project. The way we see it unfolding is that once we have kind of the overall, and we gather resident input, other stakeholder input, and we hire somebody to draw all those plans for us, that's when Main Street will start to work on grant funding and other funding, to come up with bits and pieces and bite that off one chunk at a time.
I'd offer to draw in the Cape Charles Tree Advisory Group, since they've been discussing with Canone what can be done there relative to trees.
Perfect.
Their interest to help.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. I will put that in. So those are our -- I'm going to talk a little bit about each one individually, and I'll come up to the lights in Strawberry Street Plaza and Mason Avenue in a minute. So the first project, as we talked about, is the train. We've gotten a lot done so far. This year has been really good for getting the train moving along. We obviously got it moved into its final place. The metalwork has been completed. The roof has been completed, and we've had end rails put on, and they look fantastic. Barry did an amazing job on that project. And now it's down to us moving towards windows, which, for temporary purposes, we're going to have Emily Smith work with Main Street. Tammy's going to at least give us some of her services to help with that. And we are going to look at doing some sort of paintings that would look like passengers in the car that we're going to secure, so we can secure the window area. It doesn't make sense for us to put new windows in a project that are probably going to get rocks thrown through them fairly quickly when the project isn't even ready to go inside. So that's going to be a temporary solution until we decide how to proceed with the inside of the train. So it will at least look good. We'll also be looking, we're going to get signage up that explains what the project is, how it's coming along, and kind of show a progression, as well as a board, which have a donation QR code that people coming by, they see it, they want to donate, because there's a lot of train buffs. So that'll be up sometime in the next couple of months. So we're also looking at painting. I've talked to the old DuPont company that did the paints for the original train cars. I'm trying to get them to donate the paint to us that they originally made for those cars. So I'm working on that. So far, positive. And again, the goal is to have it completed for next season. Of course, we just talked about the entrance to Cape Charles. I appreciate the input, Paul, so we will be looking at that. It's a large project, and we know it's going to be multi-year project, but this is something that Main Street would like to, you know, to help start on the road. And our last two projects, shade in Strawberry Street Plaza, people have been asking for that for years. We now have a lot more grab-and-go food options here in Cape Charles. And once they take those foods outside of those establishments, where do they sit and eat? In the hot sun. So we're looking at doing some umbrella-type shading in Strawberry Street Plaza to help do that over the benches that we've already put in place in planter areas, so that they'll at least have someplace they can go and rest and have their food, enjoy their food. The other is lighting for Festive Fridays. Last year was the first time we had lit up the trees, and we did 21 of the trees, and my God, we got more feedback, which I shared in our last report with you. Number one, what did people like about Festive Fridays? The lighted trees were fantastic. We want more, and we want them more, more often. So we just decided to do a last-minute grant, which has been submitted to the North -- to Northampton County. It will be going before the Board of Supervisors, and by the end of September, we hope to have a decision. And we've asked for the money to put up permanent lighting. We have found, through a little research, there's a company that is willing to put up lighting permanently, and we also looked at the maintenance of that, which Main Street would be able to take on, because it's a lot smaller chunk to bite off than us putting those lights up every year and taking them down. For $5,500, the company will come back twice a year, replace bulbs, replace connectors, anything that they need to, to keep them in 100% working order. And $5,500 is a lot better than $24,000 a year. So to me, that was kind of a no-brainer. So that's what we're hoping, that we get good news on in September, but, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed. So that's it for the quick overview. Happy to take questions. And if, again, I will leave the annual report. That was a compliments of DHCD grant, by the way. So everybody got that with our new fundraising. So that was our first stab. It will get better every year, I promise.
Better than you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Recognition of employees' significant anniversary, which I just found out today, is Libby Q. 15 years of service to the Municipal Corporation of Cape Charles.
Thank you, Libby.
Yes, thank you. All right. Let's see, any public comments?
Ms. Ms. Diane Davis. To the town mayor, members of the council, manager, and clerk, I am Diane Davis of 601 Jefferson Avenue. I am here this evening to thank you all for your support and the different things that you have done to help us at the school that I graduated from, which is Cape Charles Elementary School, which you call Cape Charles Rosen Ball School. But we really do appreciate the different things that you've done at this point, and we hope that you all will continue to support us in our efforts to make a place that can be used by all mankind. Thank you so much.
There you go.
She's the only one that has signed up, and I have not -- did not receive anything in writing prior to the meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda for the approval of the agenda format, approval of minutes, and approval of June 30th, 2023 financial report?
I'd like to pull out the financial report.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull out the minutes.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the approval of the agenda format.[1301.83][1301.83](Laughter)
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries.
No. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the minutes to add the comments that I had made last meeting regarding a vote that we took, and you've received a copy of those amendments. And I would propose that we accept the minutes with the amended wording that you have received.
And how about the vote itself? The vote was not unanimous.
Right.
That was fixed prior and included in the packet.
All right, good. All right. I'll second that. Any other discussion?
All in favor of approval of the minutes with the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now the --
With regards to the financial report for June 30th, I'll make a motion that we accept it, with the only change being to the capital improvement project plan, where it shows fiscal year '23 budgeted items incorrectly for the Welcome Center and the library upgrade. So right now, the municipal space was shown as $550,000. The Welcome Center was $550,000, and the library upgrade was $550,000, and that's not the perfect number. So again, we can go back and quickly correct those, but I'd offer up those changes with the acceptance of the balance of the report.
And just to add, the corrected version was put online, correct, Libby?
Yes.
Yes. So I would suggest that the motion include to adopt the version that was online, which has those changes.
It was online, but not on drop-the-job. Well, the most recent one that you sent me was Tuesday evening, was the second version that was sent to me, was the one that was put online.
No, since then, there was a --
Well, I just went --
Why did not get anything after that?
I just went and looked at it, and it wasn't changed.
Online, it's the same.
Yeah. I did not receive that one, if that's the case.
All right. I'm sorry. The one I have in front of me has the changes. I guess I'm not sure where I got it then.[1471.11][1471.11](Laughter)
Did I get a second on the motion?
I get it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. No unfinished business. New business. The Harbor Projects contract award.
So, Mr. Mayor, you may recall, last year, we did a pretty comprehensive engineering study of the harbor to come up with a long-term plan for capital improvements. Among the top priorities for that work was to address some of the inner harbor work, the King piles and lower whales supporting the bulkhead. So we put that out to bid, but also, as you recall, we had some damage to the Inshore Breakwater. It was some sort of a large vessel hit that we thought we had corrected, but there apparently must have been some damage below the mudline that we weren't aware of, and it continued. So we had that re-engineered and redesigned, and moved that as a high priority as well. So both of those projects were put out to bid. We received the bids back. Not surprisingly, they came in above budget. We were prepared for that. We had budgeted $180,000 for the breakwater and $306,000 for the inner harbor work. Combined, adding in contract management, that we were $300 -- excuse me, $133,000, $134,000 short to award those contracts. The inner harbor work had three phases. So what we were recommending is the first two phases, which gets the bulk of the work that needs to be done now, and that we feel that we can accomplish. The last phase, we'll put in for another grant to deal with that. So we do have, in appropriated funds right now in the -- for the harbor budget, we have $123,000 in repair and maintenance, and we have $95 in contingency. So there is sufficient appropriated money available to fund the awards that I'm recommending. However, it's my intention at mid-year review to request appropriation of some money from the fund balance in the capital projects fund. As you recall, we have left over $700,000 in the fund balance, unappropriated, for this sort of thing when projects come in, because the construction market is just so unpredictable right now post-COVID. So we have enough to award the contract now, and I will replenish that money, or request that we replenish that money at mid-year with the fund balances in the capital projects fund balance. So with that, I would recommend approval of the first two phases of the inner harbor project and the breakwater project in the amount of $161,200.
Does the mayor make a motion that we authorize contract to marine contracting corporation in the amount of $601,200, and apply to -- and apply another aid to the local ports grant next spring to help fund Phase 3 of the inner harbor bulkhead project?
Second. Any other discussion?
The only thing I'd ask is, I don't know if we've seen drawings posted in previous meetings, but I'd ask, perhaps in the meeting minutes, we post what the set of drawings are for this particular project?
The full set of drawings in the minutes?
Well, what I'd like to see is just, I don't need every single detailed drawing, but I'd like to see an outline of what is encompassing the scope on these, if we have.
Okay, so a project summary and schematics, or something along that line?
Yeah, so that it's documented in the dollar figure what we're approving, and that we can always refer back to it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Harbor Project moves. Appointment of interim treasurer.
Mr. Mayor, this is not something I've been looking forward to. I've known about this for a number of months now, but it doesn't make it any easier. As you all know, our treasurer, Debbie Pocock, has decided to take a very well-deserved retirement. She's given us plenty of notice. We've been recruiting for quite a while, all summer, since about May. And I just wanted to go on record as saying that Debbie's just been incredible. She's the glue that has kept everything together. When I got here over three years ago, things were not great. And -- And, and it was because of Debbie I was able to figure it out, and, and the two of us worked together to develop policies over the past three years that have straightened us out, and, and I think we're on, on pretty good, good, good financial footing right now with our policies and with our, and with our financials. She just was, she was just tenacious. I mean, the, the needs of the town took, always took, took priority. You know, she would, she would go out of her way to help every individual that called. She would go out of her way to find every dollar that was owed the town. I mean, she just, was just, was just phenomenal. I can't say enough about her, and I just truly hope she enjoys, she enjoys this, this retirement. And I, and I just want to give my heartfelt thanks to, to her for her service. That said, I did coerce her into helping out a little bit going forward. She, she has agreed to, to consult with us as needed on an, on an hourly basis, so that as we go forward, we can still tap into that, to that wealth of, that knowledge and, and expertise that she has. So, with that said, I'll say that, um, we, we've been advertising for quite a while. It's just due diligence, we should for her position, it's important. We did get a, a few qualified individuals that would have been worth interviewing, but none of them with the, with the public service experience that we were really hoping for. So, we decided to, to look internally. That's always, in my opinion, the best option, is to grow, to grow talent from within. And one of the things that Debbie was very good at was identifying talent. And she, throughout her time here, was able to hire good people, put them in good, good positions, and train them well. Last, uh, last winter, early spring, when a position became available, we worked together to develop a, a new position called the Assistant Treasurer position that was designed to be a treasurer in training kind of, of position, someone who, over time, would learn and be able to move up. And we hired a fabulous person for that. Adrian Lee was, was hired to do that, and he's doing great. But he was hired in March, so it's still fairly new. And while I have absolute confidence in, in his, in his abilities, I just thought it was prudent to allow him to season a little bit more before considering him for the top role. But also, within the department, we have Jerry Murphy, who has been an incredible accountant and has a lot of history with the town. He, um, he, he's served for a number, for a number of years back in the early teens, and he came back in '21. He's been working for us, and he's just always on, on spot. He knows the people, he knows the processes. And, um, so we sat down, Debbie and Jerry and Adrian and I, and, and Jody with HR, and we, we talked about how to move forward. And what seemed to be the, the most reasonable solution was to appoint Jerry as our interim and give Adrian a little bit more time to, to grow in his job. And, um, and so that's what, so that's what we're suggesting we do, that we appoint Jerry as the, as the interim treasurer. And then, you know, nine to 12 months from now, we'll take another look at it. And if everybody's comfortable, we'll, we'll talk about maybe moving Adrian into that position. But we'll, we'll, we'll get, cross that bridge when we get to it. And, and for now, I have every confidence in, in Jerry. He's got the confidence of the staff. As I said, we've got Debbie on, on, on the shortlist to dial in if we need to. And, and I'm actually feeling really good about this, about this approach. It's, uh, even if we had had a top-notch candidate that we hired, and we, and we brought that person in, they would be starting from scratch. And, and so, we're already ahead of the game, because, because both Jerry and Adrian are already, you know, pretty well-versed with our systems, so.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jerry Murphy as the interim town treasurer.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I would like to say that I think the solution we came up with John was perfect for what we've got and what we need. So, thanks for, for that work. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, thank you for your confidence. Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Onto new bank, things through resolution.
So, getting down, a little bit down into the weeds of the finance department now. One of the things that we've, as you may know, we currently have authorized four, um, four people who are authorized to sign bank notices and sign checks. That's the treasurer, the manager, the clerk, and the mayor. That generally works okay, but it takes two signatures. So, if there's only four of us, if one person's gone, it can make, it can make it difficult sometimes when things have to happen quickly, especially since one of those four doesn't work in, in Town Hall all the time. It became especially noticeable this summer when, as, also as you may know, Debbie went on vacation in July, and on her way back, she broke her kneecap. She's been working from home ever since. So, um, that makes it even more challenging to, to, if, if somebody who is an authorized signer is either incapacitated or, or if that position goes vacant for an extended period of time. So, to allow flexibility, I'm requesting two things. The resolution that before you that authorizes this does two things. One, it increases the number of signers by one to five. It adds in the assistant treasurer. As I just explained in the previous item, that's the position that's being, that's being, um, you know, groomed for the treasurer. So, so that, it makes sense for, for that to be the extra, an extra person in finance, especially right now as Jerry and Adrian will be working very closely together over the next year. But in addition to that, I thought it was also prudent to add in there the potential for, if a vacancy should occur for, for long-term, that either the manager or the mayor can appoint, can appoint an interim signer with notice to council. So, you would be, you would be provided written notice that, that that was taking place. And then, and then again, notice when it was, when it was changed back. So, those are the two changes to the authorization for, for signing that I would request you, you approve.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt Resolution 20230817, which amends the staff positions authorized to sign banking documents for the town's depository accounts.
Second. So, I move for adoption of Resolution 20230817 to amend the staff positions authorized to sign banking documents for the municipal corporation of Cape Charles, depository accounts, as noted, and for due of the reading of the resolution. Is there any other discussion? All right, it's a roll call. Bennett?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Buddha?
Yes.
Olmer?
Yes.
Rosen?
Yes.
Alou?
Yes.
All right. Cape Charles Rosenwald School, letter of support to Department of Historic Resources.
So, um, the, the Rosenwald School Initiative folks are trying to get on the register, and they have, have, even though, even though the, the school is outside the historic district, the Historic District Review Board has taken a look at this. And, and, uh, they have supported the concept of, of, you know, encouraging inclusion on this, on this role. And they have actually voted to, to do so, and the zoning administrator on their behalf has sent in a letter suggesting same. But because it's outside the jurisdiction, and it's something that the town council has traditionally supported, we are asking for an additional letter to be, to come from the whole town, from the council, signed by the mayor, that does essentially the same thing. So, I would, I would recommend approval of the, of the letter.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, the council approve of, of the submission of a letter to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources supporting the nomination of Cape Charles Rosenwald School for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places in the Virginia Landmarks Register.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, one thing, not part of the town, but I think Cape Charles may need to readjust their boundaries to include that down the set around to encompass, because if we build a municipal center, that way it will be in there. That means that will be a complete business district, which will help the Rosenwald School do after the national grants, which will be bigger. So, if, if you guys can somehow adjust those boundaries, it's not a whole lot.
I know it's not a lot. I need the exact boundaries on that, and that's something I have to go through DHCB, because we've talked to them about that type of thing before.
I can adjust the map.
Sometime. So, if you could, the quicker I can get exactly what it looks like, I can start.
I'll, I'll work with you on that. Actually, it's not, it's not, that's not a bad idea, not only for the reasons you mentioned, but because the property directly across the street is commercially known property.
Correct.
So, so that, that whole area is, yes, that, that could be developed commercially eventually, so that's...
And that's a, that's a, that's a big thing for not only Rosenwald, but everybody around there, which...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, letter carries. Um, all right, um, comments?
A couple of things. You heard, heard on, on Farmain Street, the, the big projects they're working on. Obviously, the, the visitor center restroom project is a big one. We've, we've had a number of, of delays over the spring and summer, but just, I think you're all aware. It is on the street now, so, so we are, we are actively recruiting bids for that. And we're, um, the bids will be due on September 8th. So, that's...
September what?
September 8th. So, I don't know, um, whether we can turn that around in time for the September meeting or not. If everything is, is straightforward, we will try. If not, I may request a special meeting after that, rather than wait all the way till October. So, we'll, we'll keep it, we'll keep you in a loop on that. I also just found out a few days ago, only because I asked, the Kings Creek dredging project is on. Yes, so I, I've been very disappointed in the fact that, that we have, the town of Cape Charles has been left out of the loop on this. Last year, if you may recall, they put this project out to bid. The bids came in twice the budget, so they canceled it, never told us. So, here, we were planning to rent equipment and be ready to move sand last year, and they never showed up and never told us. So, I still didn't hear anything, so I contacted them again last week, expecting to hear that it had got canceled again, because I didn't hear anything. Found out, no, it was awarded, and the project is going forward. They, they're, they... ANDPSC.
Which I'm on.
And it was, and from what I understand, the mayor specifically asked this question at the last meeting, and they didn't have an answer for him. Anyway, they, they will be mobilizing immediately after Labor Day, because I put my foot down and said nothing before Labor Day. And if, if they stick to the schedule that I saw, active dredging could begin on September 14th. So, um, if they, they have through the end of October to do that work, but they also have two weeks' worth of weather contingency days in the contract. So, if they used every weather contingency day, it could go all the way to November 20th. So, I have requested contact information of the contractor, so I can sit down with him and Public Works, and we can figure out a plan. I have yet to get that contact information. So, I haven't been able to sit down with them to come up with a plan yet. However, I just want to brief you, brief the public, that the north end of the beach will be off-limits starting mid-September. I don't know how, to what extent yet, or how far down, or how that's all going to work. Until I sit down with the contractor, I won't have those details. But we will, we will do our best to preserve the south end of the beach, that, that we'll keep that, keep as much of the beach open as we can.
So, first thing, south during, we need like a tad, well, well, like, like what? What, where does it start?
It starts at Washington.
So, we're at Washington?
No, Washington is north, so, 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 so I'm saying...
How far is it coming?
And I...
Our public doesn't know this, like, I don't, we don't, nobody knows this information, so we need to speak...
And I don't, and I don't have the details yet to answer that question, because, because I, I don't want to say something that's, I don't know how far south it's going to go. I don't know what equipment they're bringing to the table. I don't know what equipment we're going to need. I don't know whether we should just leave sand there over the winter to help, to help with erosion, and then spread it in the spring like we normally do. There's, there's all kinds of questions that we still have to work out. All I know, all I'm, this is a first, a first notice, because I just found out that it's happening, that the north end of the beach certainly from, you know, probably Madison to Washington, that, from, from that area will most likely for sure be affected. Whether we go south of that or not, I can't say yet. But I will let you know as soon as I know.
We have a lot of, we have enough snow coming.
We do, we do, we do. I asked, I asked, I asked Public Works about that today, and they have, they have plenty, so we, we'll, we'll be using it.
Because we can't get enough, we can't undergrass and contain it, so we're going to have to come up with a new, big plan.
Right.
Our part of engineering is managing the parkage, is that...
No.
No.
No, no. Yes.
Right.
Sorry, Tammy, I couldn't hear the question.
Who's managing?
Who's managing? I feel like we've just been dropped like the bomb on our best asset and our radiations. And, I mean, the last time we went through this, there were quite a few impacts that we weren't as where we are now as far as our beach usage. But the fall is today, I want to say. So, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting something's happened, but I just feel like we really need a lot more information.
ANDPDC canceled the naming draft, so they're going to start this more...
I, I couldn't agree with you more, and I'm pushing as hard as I can to get that information. And as we get a plan, we will put out, put it out to you and to the public, and we'll, we'll do the best we can. But I'm working, I'm working behind the curve right now.
The last time, you know, it was, it was the big piping and all of that, but when, you know, they were working at the sand, but it went south and all the way around. Is that still, I've looked at that, is that still applying? Because that affects the rest of the beach as well.
I just want to add, correction, it's kind of, it's pretty, not kind of the harbor.
Right, correct.
But, but we know that, but nobody is listening to this or has an interest in that. They remember that.
And I think we need to be proactive when we have that information, and telling people what to expect, like, the smell, and how long it's expected to last.
And, and the, and the look, because it'll look, it won't look like sand. It'll, it'll, it'll look black until, until it bleaches.
I can tell you from experience that it's not going to look any more like the previous dredge was the bigger problem. Because I dredged that years ago, and what came out of that basin was mud.
Well, I, I do, I do know from last year's effort that, that they did do sampling, and, and, and the muddier part, which is obviously more into the, into the harbor area or up the river, is not part of what we're getting. We're, we're supposed to be getting the, the bayside stuff. But, but even that is, is not going to look like regular sand when it's first placed on the beach. It's not, it's not going to smell great, it's not going to look great. It will eventually, but there's a process involved in curing it and bleaching it and all of that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get this, we'll get this out with public information as soon as I know what the plan is. But I just found out myself.
Yeah, we wouldn't have known that. Maybe we just started dredging.
What's that smell?
Onto more pleasant things. The, our annual ice cream social. So, um, I would like to set a standard time for this, date for this, so, so we all know every year, and we can plan for it. And my suggestion is the last Thursday in July, in, of September. That, that bounces around when we've done it before. We've, we've done it before, the, the end of September, beginning of October. Thursdays are generally council meeting nights anyway. So, my suggestion is the last Thursday in September, this year, that makes it the 28th, that we have our ice cream social. We've been bouncing around, sharing the wealth with the, with the different vendors. The first year was Chases, last year it was Cowlex. This year, we've approached Brown Dog, and they're willing to do it. So, we'll do Brown Dog this year. So, um, can any of you tell me now if you would not be able to, to make the 28th?
Yeah, Thursdays, I have council meetings.
That will, that will be your meeting. Okay.
I can make it.
Good.
Anything for your ice cream, Paul?
Yes.
I also reported previously on, that we got the, the schedule from SEC on the public hearing. It's not until March. We've been working with them on that, and it looks like there's a possibility we can get it a little bit early. Not a lot, much sooner, but, but move it into February. And if we can do that, that pushes us hopefully maybe to an April closing. So, we're working on, on trying to work that, to get that sooner rather than later. Also, we've had, we've had another new hire since last meeting. Meadow Noonan has been hired at the water treatment plant. She's a great hire, another great hire. We're excited to have her, but I just wanted to let you know that, that she, she's up and we're working now. The short, the short-term rental committee is... is working in earnest on our recommendations. And we're meeting twice this month. But what we discussed at our last meeting was timing. And what we don't want to do is get confused with the zoning updates that are going on right now. So we're still working, but it's our goal to wait until the current zoning updates are done. And then as soon as that's done, we'll follow with the short-term rental recommendations. Because Katie's ready to move forward with the zoning and we're not quite ready with short-term rental yet. And we don't want to slow her down and we don't want to get it confused. So anyway, we are working on it, but that's our thought process on timing.
Can we just say now, whether there was a question about who was the, is that her, is there a question about why the certain groups aren't coming out? Who's all on the street?
Someone was asking about, like, a full time resident, like a mom vacation.
Yeah, yeah. So to keep it manageable, I made the call to keep it to six. So we have myself, the zoning administrator for the town. We have a representative from the Bay Creek Committee who's working on short-term rentals, so we pull them in. We have a member from the Vacation Homeowners Association here. We have a representative from the Civic League, Civic League here. So we try to touch all the bases and-
The question I was just in her perspective was someone who was a, could be in the Civic League, but wasn't a short-term rental owner, which we have, which is Sam. And that was my answer to that person's question. It's like, we have Sam.
And we're going to have a public process here. So what we're doing is our research and putting together initial recommendations. So just so everyone knows, we're going to, once we have something that the committee is comfortable with, we'll probably want to meet, I would think, probably in a joint work session with the council and the planning commission to present our recommendations. After that, we're going to want to ask for a town hall meeting. So that we have the whole community come in and be able to have a back and forth with them on it. And then if you're okay with that, then we send it to the planning commission to do its stuff. So that's what we're thinking. And the last thing is, as you know, September, I traditionally go to Alaska to go see my kids and grandkids. I intend to do so again this year. This year is especially important because I've got a new grandson. He was just born two weeks ago. So I will be in Alaska the second half of September. And that means the September regular meeting, I will participate, but I'll be calling in.
Will you be back for the ice cream?
I will be back for the ice cream social.
I'll take the table.
I don't have a problem blowing off the council, but I'm not going to miss ice cream. Yeah. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other comments from the council?
I have one, maybe two. I attended a meeting last week that was put on by a landscape group in Bay Creek. It included people from Bay Creek and from the historic district. And they had a speaker from the Virginia Tech Extension over on North Hampton Boulevard that spoke about native plantings. And it was a very well-done, tons-of-information-type lecture. But in the question-and-answer session afterwards, someone brought up the fact that they wanted Cape Charles to be a bee city. And that had come up in the past and was kind of quashed because there was a division between people who wanted mosquito spraying and those who didn't. So a group of people, Cape Charles people, from Bay Creek and the historic district are getting together there, come up with some suggestions. I just wanted to make you aware that they want to come back to council at a point and make a presentation with suggestions as to how we could move forward and then have Cape Charles designated as a bee city.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. And that's exactly what I was hoping to hear, is that they try and figure out that conundrum for us. Because it was a no-win situation if the town just did it one way or another, we're going to make happy the community. So what I'm hoping is that they can figure out a way that can help with mosquito control that is pollinator-friendly.
Right.
You know, if they can do that, we're there.
There were a number of people there that indicated that that was not only possible but practical.
Good. Excellent. I look forward to hearing that.
They get their information together and come in and make a presentation.
That's good to hear.
The other thing I wanted to do, and I'm sorry she's not here, but I want to add my thanks to Debbie Pocock and her career with the town of Cape Charles. I was here when she was hired. She's the best treasurer by far that we've had since I've been on council. And I think she's done a fantastic job. You know, Jerry, we look forward to it. And I'm not taking anything away from you, but Debbie, Debbie's a hard act to follow. You know, if she's incapacitated, I don't know that she'll be back before she goes, but I just, I do want the public to know that we're losing a great employee.
I defer being here. Anybody else? All right, can I just make a few announcements?
Sorry. Sorry. I also, I just want to give a big shout-out to the Rosenwald School for getting that big old grant. That's a huge, huge thing. So, well done.
Yes, indeed. All right. So August 21st, we're going to have a joint work session with the planning commission at 6:00 PM. August 31st, town council executive session, 5:30. September 4th, town offices closed for Labor Day. September 7th, joint work session of the planning commission, again at 6:30. And then September 21st, the regular town council meeting. And can I get a motion for?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.